Participated in the bridge of Keller Street from the beginning of the burned building on the corner of the evening church streets has also been demolished. Many ends, but there's been some word that we participated in that financially.
Oh, we did.
No doubt.
We did that.
Right.
I just thought it ought to be noted in the record.
Oh, yes. Yeah, great, great. I'll just put the last part.
Thank you so much for bringing this up. And me to know people enough to have to be included, but we will ask for approval with that on many pieces being made to the, um, the meeting, the minutes on Tuesday, June fourth, under the report of the town administrator. I believe in the second that we have approval of the minutes Tuesday, June fourth with the, um, added information in there under the report of the town administrator. And as has already been indicated, it makes it sound as if the town in fact did have some financial responsibilities in that committee. Are you ready for the question?
Sure.
All those in favor, please do so with a show of hands. Opposes? Motion is counted. Acceptance of the police and fire reports, that we just have an acceptance and receive that as information, the police and fire reports they need.
So, is this a move?
Mayor, did you guys approve the agenda?
I'm sorry?
I know you approved the minutes, but did you approve the agenda?
I'm sorry. Thank you. Number three, can we have approval of our present agenda? I believe in the second that we have approval of our present agenda. Are you ready for the question?
Sure.
All those in favor, please do so with a show of hands. Opposes? Motion is counted. I'm sorry. Now, we've already gone through, and I've just, I'll repeat it again, number four, acceptance of our police and fire reports, you receive that as information. I believe in the second that we have first reports, the police and the fire reports accepted as information. I'm sure you all have accomplished those new reports. At this time, we will move your citizens into it, and I'm going to do every care to do this. I'll repeat it again. I have two persons on, well, first of all, before I even do that, let me welcome everyone to our city council meeting. It is enlightening to see so many of the present. We just wish that this could be every single time that we have a meeting. We'd love to have our citizens come and correlate with us. We're happy to have you all with us and hope you will do this again and again. Um, as I said, I'll repeat this just as I have before in the past, we have a signing sheet where we have persons who need to speak or want to speak concerning, um, this is the time for citizens input, and you have up to three minutes to speak on matters on the agenda, on matters related to the town of St. Matthews. And during this three minutes of time, uh, other citizens will not be allowed to get up and randomly speak from the floor. Only those persons whose name is on the agenda will be given that three minutes to speak. So, I do have two names, and the first person I'm going to have is Robin Mitchell.
Did I need to stay right here or?
Oh, you're fine unless you feel more comfortable coming up here. I mean, you could.
Um, I, no, I'm fine right here. Um, I actually wanted to speak on your, um, the animal. Is there an ordinance that you are looking at right now possibly to pass soon or is this make, is there a first reading tonight of some sort of?
Yes, my first one.
Animal activity that you're, okay. So, right there, there's no ordinance or anything right now in place that you're trying to pass or thinking of passing?
Is there any what?
For animals or dogs in the city? Okay, all right. Um, I, that, that was the reason that I was here, uh, was aware that y'all were looking.
No loose animals.
What was that?
No loose animals.
No loose animals.
There's a leash law. There is a leash law.
Okay. Yeah, I was under the impression that you were trying to.
We were trying to pass something tonight, and I, I wasn't really prepared to pass tonight.
Okay. Yeah, I, I was, I was thinking that you were looking at maybe an ordinance for the city. So, I wasn't, I wasn't sure on that because it didn't clarify it, but I felt that's what it was.
When she finished.
But she, but you, I mean, you feel free.
Yeah, okay. Um, well, I, I did see that you were having some issues maybe with stray loose animals. Um, if you decide to maybe pass a future ordinance, um, I would ask that maybe you go the direction of registration possibly, um, of animals within the city, and with that is going to come revenue for you here in the city. Um, if you had a registration, your, your city residents would, uh, register one time only for maybe a small fee of five dollars a dog if the animal is spay neutered. If the animal was not spay neutered, you could possibly do a yearly registration fee, which would be anywhere from twenty-five to a hundred dollars. You would set that fee, and that would be yearly. That's for, for intact animals. That registration is going to, one, figure out how many animals that each person has in the city, dog, as far as dogs. Also going to help cut down on the strays. If there is a registration, people's not going to want to pay maybe a hundred dollars per dog for a year or twenty-five per year. That might motivate them to spay neuter possibly, which is going to cut down on your strays, your puppies, um, local shelters filling up and so forth. Um, and, and there again, I, that was something that I had thought that maybe you all were looking at as a future ordinance for the city. So, um, just trying to maybe give you some sort of id- idea that's going to bring in revenue as well as cut down on animals that are intact and breeding within the area. Thank you. And I did want to mention that I am, um, on the council for the State Humane Society. And I did appreciate you all hearing me today and, um, letting you know that we are here to support you if there is something in the future that we didn't want to, to go with. We'll be here for you. Okay?
Appreciate you so much. Something to be get to.
Thank you.
We're very happy to have you in this.
Thank you.
Mayor, um, just wanted to comment, I guess, just on a few things. First, you were correct. Um, the town, we have not scheduled anything on our agenda as far as amending, um, our ordinance regarding, um, animals. However, um, town staff and county staff have been working together probably for over a year and a half to talk about different possibilities and proposals that we could work on regarding how we communicate, uh, animal control issues that we have. That comes through our police department, the way that the county set up the policy. Also, in the council project sales tax, um, penny, that's actually being held up by litigation right now. The county actually, um, one of their projects was actually dollars to expand their shelter. Uh, it's actually just a little bit of money, but actually that's one of the major problems as well because the county does not have the resources nor the capacity to do a lot of things. So, we've been talking about a lot of different issues internally and do hope and expect that sometimes to bring back to our respective, um, um, councils those issues. But the issue that you're referring to actually came about because of, there was traffic on Facebook saying that that was going to be the case, but that was, no governmental staff was doing that. That was just traffic on the social media that was saying that. And I think that's what gave a lot of people some misunderstanding that the, uh, that, that was going to be on the town agenda. But that was never scheduled to be on the town agenda.
Okay, I understand.
Thank you for the observation. Uh, next on our, uh, persons wanting to be stacked rally, a citizen from the town who don't recognize you as a state.
Good evening, members of council, uh, fellow citizens. I have noticed that we have in a good bit of, just in my riding around town, of yard debris, limbs, leaves, that sort of stuff beginning to pile up. What is the procedure going to be for getting rid of this stuff? Uh, so in the SD, I know the two employees that were doing that, uh, their jobs were, for lack of a better term, done away with. Uh, I know that one will be working a couple of days a week if he wants to. But, uh, how we go, how, how we go get rid of such things, ma'am?
Mr. Riley, as I've responded to you in the past, I will do, I'll say it again, any questions that you may have that the county, well, the appropriate person needs to respond to you. If you will get that to us in writing, we will give it to the appropriate person or see that the appropriate person gets it so that he can respond to you. So, we'd like you to leave your information so that we can respond to you. I have at this time.
I just brought this to you because I, I've seen.
But I'm sure, but I'm just saying at this time, it's not the time that we're going to answer questions coming forward such as.
That's an answer, you know, would be appreciated to be forthcoming because, uh, I just noticed the stuff building up.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I thank you for the observation. Mayor and council news is next on our uptown, I'm sorry, mayor and council news is next. And we do have recognition of town employees, um, the following employees have July birthdays, and they are Joseph Munson on the thirteenth of July and Willie Stewart on the twenty-third of July. And we certainly want to wish those persons a happy birthday during the month of July. Um, next we will have our town council news from anyone on these, uh, roster who has any news that they'd like to share with us at this time.
Yes, ma'am. Um, to the minister, um, on that road, uh, on the road, we read street.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, down through that, this needs to be covered.
Yes, ma'am. It's scheduled.
We appreciate.
Is anyone else look like this?
I don't have anything to say. Do you? Okay.
Um, the banners and the flags look great downtown. Um, whoever put those, I'm assuming, then can you answer, Smart Committee did that again? They look great, the flags.
The help of Dominion putting them up.
Huh?
Was Dominion putting them up?
Yes.
You have to call him, man, don't.
Do you have anything else? Okay. Um, next, please, the N O A C P request.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, mayor and, uh, members of council, that was just a, um, uh, information piece that actually came, uh, from the N O A C P, um, sharing that information when they have their banquet, I think it's in October.
October.
Yes, ma'am, and I think I left that information with the mayor, and if you want, uh, a copy of that or information about that, we'll provide it, um, to you.
Thank you so much. Under all business, Pine Hill Road Sewer.
Um, yes, ma'am. Uh, thank you, mayor. Uh, good evening, members of council and citizens of the town of St. Matthews. The Pine Hill Road Sewer, at our last meeting, I was telling you that actually we've had a breach of our, the, the manhole there and actually, I guess, the, uh, the sewer line itself was actually deteriorating. Uh, we actually contracted with, um, Port Construction to do council approved, uh, us moving forward with them. That work has actually, the sewer work has actually been, um, performed and completed. The last bit of work, though, that they have to do is they will be coming back and actually, uh, resurfacing the road where they had to dig the road up. Um, everything is working appropriately. Uh, however, um, we have had, one of the residents on Pine Hill has called me and mentioned that, um, she has noticed, uh, some type of smell in her home. And of course, we have contacted the contractor, and so nothing is really any different than it was before. We just have newer pipe and a new manhole there, so, um, we'll continue to, to, uh, discuss with that citizen any particular questions. But it's nothing that we have determined that is from the, the town side on that. It could be just a matter of, um, the citizen having to do something with the sewer connection to, um, the sewer line. But it is working, um, it is working well, and that is being completed.
Anyone have any questions in this court question, the Pine Hill Road Sewer situation? We're going to move on to new business here around, we're up to new business board of registration, no recognition.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, just as a reminder, um, and this really, I guess, kind of goes back two years, if you recall, I have recommended to the council that we, um, join with the county to, uh, perform our elections for the town of St. Matthews. You as a council unanimously agreed to that, and so now the county, um, Board of Registration, they actually do the elections process for us. Of course, we have, uh, three, um, well, actually four seats that actually are, that are coming up for reelection this year. The county election commission will actually be posting all of the public advertisements and information. But I just wanted to remind you, and that notification will be posted, will be posted, uh, sometime at the beginning of, of next month. And so that will be in our local papers, um, starting, um, starting then, and then the filing period and all of the information following up with that. So, just wanted to make you aware that that is forthcoming and will be, um, publicly, um, submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. So, any questions regarding that, um, board of registration notification? Report of the town administrator, one through eight, garbage service, residential, commercial, and so on, Mr. Pope.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair and Councilman. Uh, going through these, uh, items, our garbage service, the, uh, residential, um, transition to the service is working, uh, very well. The complaints have, um, been drastically reduced. I guess we had in the beginning of the transition, um, some of the addresses and the driver learning rights and whatnot. We also actually on July first transitioned on our commercial side. We had sent out numerous notifications to our commercial customers. Now, the town no longer actually picks up the green boxes, the large green boxes. Uh, the only thing that we do commercially or if it's a low generator of waste and if they need up to the three carts, we still are able to contract with them. Um, actually, that went into effect, um, this past Monday. And actually, on the commercial side, we do not get, not one call back on that. So, that's working extremely well. Uh, we have probably in the amount of, I would say about, just one, what about fifty residents on our medical list? About fifty, uh, folks on the medical list that we actually, uh, go to their home and actually pull the cart, uh, to the curb for them. Uh, had a few hiccups with that when the service first started. Uh, that has been eliminated. That works well. And we've had a few people who actually were initially pulling their cart to the curb, uh, but, you know, have had some health problems and so we addressed that as well. Uh, one of the issues that we've had, um, probably had, I think, five or six, um, complaints or calls for service with the, the wheels on the, the carts. Uh, one of the things depending on how much garbage is in the, in the can, when it's, uh, when it's, um, set back down, depending on where it is, sometimes those will, those will pop off, um, but we call, um, the service and actually to come out and replace or repair those. And so, um, that's the way that is handled. But as a reminder, and we'll put this on the website as well, uh, we ask folks to call Town Hall, uh, not the contractor. And we handle all those and actually get that. And the reason why we want to do that is, is to make sure we have documentation of what's going on with callbacks for service or anything like that. So, um, that service, uh, seems to be working, uh, extremely well. We also, I guess, we got the first, um, invoice for service because it actually started in May. And actually, the, um, the first invoice bill was actually much, much less than what we had actually anticipated, uh, that it was going to be. And the reason for that was when we looked at the first estimates, we took every, uh, account that was in the system. But we found out some of those accounts were inactive, so they didn't need active carts to go there. So, I think, um, probably a couple of hundred that we actually cleaned out of the, out of the system. So, that cost is going to be actually much, uh, less than what we, what we thought originally was.
Mr. Pope, are, are we still being guided by the fact that if in fact there is a person who has water in a home, even though sometimes people are not living there, I mean, sometimes people just have it on, I don't know for what reason, uh, are they still being serviced by base management or?
Yes, ma'am. And, and that, that was actually one of the challenges that we had at first because we did have several residences or addresses that had an active water account, but actually nobody was living there. And so, the cart would then just kind of sit on the street. But, uh, that's the way that we had to control that. So, we, we, I guess, kind of incrementally going back and actually taking some of those carts actually off of the street if it's not because, um, believe it or not, sometimes people will just put trash in them. So, uh, or, or sometimes we've had a few to go M I A, so we've had to replace a few of those. And it was Mr. Jordan's here when I said M I A, that sparked his interest. Um, not so, the next item, uh, not so good news on the next thing. If you recall, I reported to you, we had to spend approximately eleven thousand dollars to refurbish, um, one of the two pumps that went out on our lift station. Uh, we had it refurbished. We basically cannibalized, uh, one of the two pumps to repair one, to put it back in service. Well, uh, what happened, uh, again, actually, uh, at the lift station, um, and there were primarily, um, uh, toilet wipes. That, that, that's just what they were, actually got through some of the screens at the lift station. And we probably had something probably about, um, six or seven inches thick, about twelve inches long, that clogged one of the propellers on the pump again and actually, uh, broke, um, the shaft on it again. Uh, however, what we have done, I asked staff, we have actually put an entirely different screen now on the lift station. And actually, none, no, none of the wipes now can actually go through at all. They'll be stopped on the front inside, um, of that, and so that's been repaired. In fact, when the mayor came by the office, I actually showed her the, the repair, what we, what we've done on that. And then the refurbished pump is actually, is ready for pickup tomorrow, but we would reinstall. And then we're still going to have to actually address and, and, um, purchase the separate, um, the second pump because if you recall, it was actually two pumps, uh, there. So, hopefully, uh, prospectively, that will take care of that problem with different things coming through the sewer system and stopping them on the front side of the screen rather than getting into the, the shaft and propellers of the pumps. Because those things are tremendously expensive each and every time we do it. And you recall the warranty information on the refurbished ones, we only have up to like the thirty day, um, warranty. And that's if the pump fails from their repair. It has nothing to do with, um, something that's, if you will, our fault from allowing something to come through the system to damage, um, to damage the pump. And that's what this case was. I mean, it was not anything due to the pump repair itself. It was that actually debris got in the system to actually damage the pump. Uh, item number three, Elliot Davis, accounting reconciliation. Uh, this is something, if you recall, we have been doing this now for the past just about two years. Um, when we first, uh, I guess, kind of came into the office with, with, with our administration, we were behind, um, three audits, and actually a lot of the information in our accounting system was, was not in our system. So, we actually had to, um, hire Elliot Davis to assist us with reconciling, um, our accounting system from previous years, and we're catching that up. The audit also, the next item, we're running that simultaneously. We actually have gotten two or three audits. It's two. Uh, uh, well, the third audit that's due now, the auditors have done all of their preliminary work, but they're waiting on these other reconciliations to finish that. And if you recall, if we can get that one done within the next month or two, that will get us close to getting back on a regular schedule with having the audit done and performed when it's actually supposed to. So, we have to get all of these reconciliations, uh, in the system. And then, of course, we're going to have actually internal training moving forward, uh, after the twenty, uh, at, well, we have all the information in the system after twenty seventeen. Uh, but it's actually still catching everything up from primarily from twenty fourteen to twenty seventeen.
From twenty fourteen?
Yes, ma'am. And so, they are working, we are actually saving some dollars on that cost because they're able to log into our system remotely and not having to come on site. If you recall, the independent auditor, their job is to independently audit our books, but based upon the financial information that we provide to them. So, we have to get that information in order for them to do all the testing that they need to do to be able to, uh, submit, uh, final audits into the state of South Carolina. Uh, just an FYI regarding the twenty nineteen, uh, twenty twenty budget. Uh, we will have, uh, information that I'll be meeting with the mayor to come up with a schedule starting, uh, next, um, next, uh, next month. Um, one of the things that I can tell you is, though, is from one of my recommendations to you. I certainly will not be recommending any tax increase, um, in our budget. However, we will look at the fees and whatnot that we have based on some of the changes that we've made in operations. But we certainly will not be, um, recommending any, uh, any tax increase for the, uh, FY nineteen, twenty twenty budget. Item number six, a chat with the chief. Uh, we had that, um, a few weeks back, three weeks back, chief?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, we had very, well, low participation for that. Uh, however, that's not going to discourage us. That's going to be now regular routine for us to do that and to keep that, uh, on task, to continue to do that, uh, to reach out to the community, to kind of strengthen that tie with those things that are going on. And so, I thought the chief did a very good job with that, and we, uh, hope to continue to do, do that to get more people actually involved. Uh, item number seven, fireworks celebration, uh, that's on the fourth. The town, we're a partner, uh, uh, we're participating in that. Uh, we've, uh, provided maintenance on the grounds out there. That's always a large event for the town. It always seems to be a very successful event, so we are, uh, participating, uh, with that and certainly hope that everyone will, uh, come out and support that, uh, that event. And number. Yes, ma'am.
Fireworks, do we have a crowd time to that from the, from the town to the?
I could get that for, yes, ma'am, I could get that for Ms. Giard. I'm not sure. No, they started that? They started that? I could, I could find it. Just thirty minutes? Councilman Francis, that's just about thirty minutes. And then the, uh, last bit of information, that's in your packet that I included in there, is just information for you. Periodically, you know, sometimes when we have an issue with the citizens' water bill, you know, some people may suggest that our rates are, are high or something like that. And I just wanted to give you the actual factual documentation where our rates are versus, uh, other water providers in the county and other surrounding areas, and what you will see, that is really, uh, not the case. Uh, but it's just good just to have that information. So, if people ask you, you can actually provide factual information. Now, this is, and I think this was done in the survey, and this is not our survey, but an independent survey, um, twenty seventeen, but that was the last survey data, uh, that was available as soon as we get updated. And this is from, uh, the Rural Infrastructure Authority. They collect these rates from, um, municipal governments, uh, water districts and whatnot. And so, just wanted you to have that actual information as to what our, uh, what our, what our rates actually are. Uh, also, uh, I believe, and I, I wasn't here at the time, but actually talking to the USDA officials, I know when the town undertook, uh, going to the spray fill application, and when we got the loan, it was looked at the rate schedule at that time, and I think the council was briefed at some time that you were going to need to adjust those, um, based upon payback of those. So, that's something that we will always look at and bring back information to you. But I just wanted you to just have that information, uh, in your file. Mayor, just, just one other thing, and this is just information.
Okay.
Um, one of the things that we've done now since we, uh, have ADP, that we actually do our payroll application, um, for all of our employees, um, we actually have forms for council, so we're asking unless someone disagrees or whatnot, but that you, um, use that information. So, we're going to electronically, um, do the things when we, what we provide to council as well. And that way, that will really help us, you know. And that way, that will really help us, you know, for instance, just like this week when we had a short week, um, to actually get all of the deposits in and whatnot. And even if, uh, prospectively, if we have some kind of event in the future where, you know, our power is down or, well, not the power being down, because that wouldn't help us, but if there's some event, we can actually remotely do our payroll where money will be in the, in the, in, in the bank for you, for employees and whatever. So, we're going strictly for all employees and hopefully all of council as well where the pay is electronic. And so, we have those forms for you. Would ask you to, uh, to fill those out and submit those to myself and Ms. Warren so she can get them. If you have any questions about that, just give us a, just give us a call. Uh, thank you, ma'am, that's all I have.
Um, Mr. Pope, I'm just making this observation. Perhaps we, uh, I don't want you to go, you don't need to go through the, uh, entire situation. But, um, since we have so many concerned citizens here tonight, maybe it'll be a, a good time. If people have not read it already or, you know, don't know about it already, how we, uh, but the, from, from two thousand fourteen, yes, we were really way behind our audit reporting and what have you. And what importance that was as far as I being able to secure from the state what, you know, the county could get. And I'd like you to expound on that a little bit. As, because as we went along and we brought those audits up, we didn't bring them up to date. We still are not up to date because we're now just doing sixteen and seventeen, that's underway. But those previous ones that were done, what that meant to the town, in fact, you know, the, I mean, in fact, that, that they were done.
Yes, ma'am, we'll, we'll just, maybe just in short, because of, that the audits were not done, the state of South Carolina looked the, our primary sources of revenue here at the town are, we get actually, and please, you may not believe this, but we actually get a minimal amount of tax revenue. And the, and the reason that is, is because our, actually, our millage rate is so low and the, a mill of tax in the town of St. Matthews only brings in like about twenty eight hundred dollars. So, as far as a millage amount, it's really not a lot of, not a lot of money. The other sources of revenue that we have is actually what used to be called years ago, state aid subdivision, where money's actually coming from the state of South Carolina. It's called local government fund monies now. And that money comes to us. Well, because of the audits not being completed on a timely basis, the state withheld its aid to subdivision monies from the town until those audits were done. And so, that's what we have been catching up to get those done, things done, so we can have those monies released back to, back to the town. That's what we're trying to catch up as well as, uh, get our accounting house in order, uh, with things. And because of some reporting's not done, which has been reported publicly here is because IRS payments weren't made. Uh, the town has a significant amount of debt because of penalties and whatnot, that actually those things were not, uh, paid, uh, on time.
Thank you so much. I just thought that was enlightening. As I said, we don't get this many citizens, uh, so many times. So, it's, it's good sometimes to just to kind of let, and let people know what in fact is going on under council. Um, at this time, I'd like to have a moment, so that in fact, we go into executive session to discuss the personnel matter, sanitation, division and administration. And number two, potential legal matter that the police department.
Mayor, and since there are so many people here, if I could just say one thing?
Oh, most certainly.
If anyone has any questions about the, uh, the animal issue or, uh, Ms. Rob, if you want to call me tomorrow about, uh, the, uh, yard race, which actually, uh, we haven't had any reduction in service on that, just to give me a call at eight seven four twenty four five.
Mackenzie, thank you so much. Thank all of you.
May I have a question? Um, I'm new to the...
You signed in on, I'm sorry, you weren't signed in on the public input. And they had three minutes to speak.
Okay, I'll just ask a question at the end.
I understand that, but we do have a policy by which we have everyone who needs to ask a question or anything else, that you do sign in at the beginning of the group, okay?
I signed in my name, I didn't...
That's what she's talking about. If you sign the notebook, she can talk, right?
Oh, there's two signings.
There's two, okay, there's two signings.
I didn't get the one. If there are two signings, she's...
No, she's talking about the notepad, not a man, and then the actual secret talk.
She signed her name on the notepad.
The notepad.
But I, I have the official sign in, you know, I have the official sign in.
This is my first meeting, so I didn't know, I apologize.
I'm sorry, Mr. Pope, I'm sorry. Okay, we'll make it there.
I, I just...
Yes, ma'am.
I was just saying, since everybody, I was so impressed with the turnout of everybody, that the turnout was because of, we thought was the, for the animal talk. That's the reason why we all came. And so, um, since this is my first time coming and I wasn't aware of how y'all operated, and I apologize.
It's okay.
Was, if it's not on the agenda today, how do we get it on the agenda so that we can discuss it since?
The, the real question.
She, she was asking.
The question is, how do I get, how do we get it on the agenda to talk about it?
If you'll just look, uh, Mr. Pope, before the next meeting that you'd like to be on, you know, you'd like to have it as a part of the agenda, that can be entertained.
Thank you, that's all, thank you.
And we thank you so much.
Mayor, if I could just say, well, just, because I, I won't have this captive audience either, just so everybody understands. Like I said, the town and the county are talking staff to staff about these issues. And I know that they are, because I've met with several people who've come by my office who've been interested in this issue. And I don't know if it's a collective group or different folks, and I, I don't know if it's an organization or whatnot. But those items like the lady here mentioned, if you have those and you haven't been writing, or you email them to us, that can be shared with the county. Because I can tell you, one of the big issues about this is, is actually the size of the shelter and the capacity of the shelter to be able to do things. Because unless you, unless, unless you have a part, uh, that's a part of it.
That's not big.
I mean, you, you, you have to be able to, I mean, that's a part of the equation.
I wasn't so much asking about the shelters, was like the tethering walls and chain and bells on and stuff like that. That was more of the math question.
Yeah, but, but it's all a part of it because our, the town, we don't have any, uh, animal control officers. And so, we use actually the county to be able to do the services for us. So, anything that we do actually impacts them.
Right.
So, that's, so, any kind of concern or problem that they're having, we have to be aware of that as well. And so, that's what I'm asking everybody, is just to make sure that they understand that. Because the town can't do anything in a vacuum, uh, about that issue if we're going to do different things than what we're doing. That, that's the point.
And when y'all meet about this, county to town, is there an opportunity to be there?
No, there will be once we actually bring it back to our public bodies because they have to set the policies. We don't just arbitrarily just kind of set or change the policy. That's going to have to go to county council and it's going to have to come back to the town council to decide what our policies are going to be.
So, it's go to county first and then back to you guys?
Well, it could go that way or it may be on parallel tracks at the same time.
So, we're just trying to figure out the best way to help the animals that are chained on with logging chains and have been, you know, abused or neglected or whatever.
And what I would encourage you to do is, just like I requested and I gave, uh, young lady here my card, is those things of those issues, put those issues in writing, where we can actually supply those to make sure the county has the same thing and we have the same thing. So, we have those discussions when the policy comes back to town council. Everybody will be on the same page with what we're talking about.
Okay, so in the meantime, nothing gets done about all this in the last year and a half? You guys have been talking about it?
Well, the, actually, the enforcement level that we have right now, that's what continues. I mean, that's the way that we're operating that.
And, and I'm sorry, what, what is that, the enforcement level?
That says if you have an animal control complaint, you have to actually call nine one one because the county won't respond at all unless the complaint actually comes through the St. Matthews Police, uh, Police Department.
So, they have to go out first?
I'm sorry.
The police have to go out first and investigate and then call the animal control, county animal control?
Yes, mhm, that's, that's right.
So, when they go out for these complaints, what is the, I mean, what's been happening? Because apparently, you know, there's still a lot of it going on. So, are they not doing anything about it? Are they reporting it to animal control or?
Yes, all of those things. I mean, there, there, there are reports that are made, um, um, and like I said, I didn't mean to get in this much, you know, ma'am, I apologize. But I'll just say this, and, well, I, I'll just give a simple example. If, if someone complains or someone has a complaint that says, well, an animal is being mistreated at one 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 Houser Street, okay? A citizen may do that, they need to call in to nine one one. Uh, our police department has to go out and actually investigate that. They do a report, they have a report, they fill out if they think it's actually, um, abuse or neglect. Of course, they aren't trained to do that. They have to call the county, uh, animal control department to be able to come out and investigate that.
So, what determines that part? If they think it's, if they think, if they're not trained for that, then what does it take for them to think it's abuse?
The, the county does.
What happens is usually if we get a call, let's say, um, you call and say that there is a dog, um, that's not being fed, doesn't have water and everything, we'll go out there, we check that. Then we'll call animal control to the scene. And then they will make the decision to, uh, and decide what to do. Like a lot of times, they don't have, um, spaces for animals.
Sure.
Um, so, like, a few weeks ago, we had a call, there was a couple of dogs. Um, at least one of them weren't, wasn't being tended to. It was on the loose, it was skittish. The owner said, I can't catch it, it won't come to me. Put a trap out, the dog's too smart, it won't go in the trap. Um, and then, so, as a police officer, eh, there's nothing I could do about that. And unless animal control is able to catch the dog and has room to house the dog, I mean, we're kind of at it.
Right, but this is more not about an owner that can't catch your skittish dog. They're still feeding it obviously, right?
Yeah, they need food out for it.
I'm talking about the ones that are on logging chains, the ones that aren't being fed, the ones that are out in the sun with no shelter, the ones that don't have water.
That's what we call animal control. And they have to have...
Report to animal control.
We have to, that's, that's the way it is.
I'm just trying to understand how it works.
Um, the citizen, no, I'm just saying, the citizen can't call animal control directly themselves because they will not come into the city unless the officer responds to the call.
Okay.
And so, we respond to the call.
And you guys do respond to every complaint.
We respond to the calls and we call animal control. And then it's up to them to, to handle it from there.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
And so, those discussions will be moving forward. And yes, there have been things that have been being done. But there's other parts of this whole infrastructure that needs to happen. And our public bodies have to actually pass policies to be able to do those things. And that's what we're trying to actually bring to it.
As far as the sign in policy, you sign in before the meeting starts, correct?
Signing when you come in.
And then you get three minutes? So, if we don't know what's going to be this, like, we have an, an agenda, of course. So, should we just sign in just in case we have a question? Because if you have a question and you haven't signed in, you don't get to ask it, correct? Okay.
Perhaps there should be a question and answer session at the end?
No, ma'am, that is not what we be conducting meetings.
Well, I, I understand what you're saying. But like, there was something that happened during the agenda that I would love clarification for, but because I didn't sign in, I can't ask that question.
Well, the agenda, the agenda couldn't have been amended or anything else happened to it because...
No, but I can still ask the question.
But if you do have a question, perhaps...
Yeah, if I had signed in, but...
You can just, you know, tell us what that is and we would answer that as best we could if you get it to the appropriate person. Any question that you have on here about the agenda.
Just sign in.
I'm sorry, but that is the way the meeting is conducted. You sign in. And if you have anything that you want to say, it says that, anything about the business of the city or on the agenda, you may do that at that time.
Yeah, that just leaves out questions that come up during conversation. For example, like town administrator telling you that, that he is giving you information about how our rates compare to other towns. And, you know, personally, as a citizen, I might see how my rates compare to other towns. But that information has only been made privy to you. It was not, it's not literally here in what we have been given. And, you know, that question, I didn't know when I walked through the door that something like that would, question like that would come up. But if there were a question and answer session towards the end, you know, that might give a chance.
You could FOIA that information.
As I said, we do have citizens, a, a portion of our meeting that sets aside for citizens' input. And no matter what it is, that it pertains to matters on the agenda or matters related to the town, say, may this, even if it wasn't today, perhaps when you came back to the next meeting, you could address that.
Are these made available online ahead of time?
I'm sorry.
Are these available online ahead of time?
The agenda is, Mr. Pope.
On the agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
We do, or, or you, you can also, if you actually email us, we'll email it out to you.
And send it to you.
Do you have a FOIA policy?
Yes, yes, we do. And actually, I'm glad you brought that up because the, the young lady, uh, Ms. Fackler was asking a question. And I, I agree with the mayor totally is, if you have a question about something that's come out of the discussion the way that the agenda is, you have two options. You could, if you want to wait that long, you could wait to the next meeting and then you can get on the agenda to say that. Or after that, you can actually contact Town Hall because we actually passed a FOIA policy at our last meeting. You can submit that information and get that or, you, I mean, you don't even need a FOIA really is. If you call me and ask me that, I'll send you the same rate now because it's public information.
Thank you.
What's the, um, policy to get on the agenda? There is a timeframe that you have to be on the agenda. Can't just get on it that day, you have to do it so much time in advance, right? Twenty-four hours?
Yeah.
Friday before the meeting. Twenty-four hours, twenty-four hours.
But we, but we still don't actually stifle anybody by saying, just leaving it wide open for that, that time that's on there. Even if you don't call us before then, you still can get on the agenda. So, I mean, you, you're not restricted, not restricted by that.
Also, if you're not on the agenda, then the council can't, can't take action from public comment.
That's right.
You can only take action with the agenda. So, just because you comment on something, we can't take action on it legally. You need to be on, on the agenda.
And that's a great point, and I hope everybody understands that. And that's why, just building questions from the audience, you can't give a response back because it may not be all of the information about that. And I hope that you would want the accurate, right information rather than having an open discussion about, you know, somebody just kind of, because like some of the incidents that whatever you may be aware of or have heard or whatever, just like all of that discussion that was going on on Facebook. And I can tell you, I saw some of those comments and some of that stuff is accurate and a lot of it is not. But, um, but, I mean, you don't, you don't, I mean, I don't know. You may know a lot more about some situations that we don't even know about.
Probably.
But, but you, but yeah, well, you may. But you always, even before this meeting, you always can call Town Hall to get information.
Could we get like the rules and the protocols maybe put on the Facebook page so that we'll know ahead of time?
We, we are actually, program page, the town has actually never had, uh, a website. We just put, rolled out our website when, about a month ago. And we plan on actually putting all the information like that out there so that, uh, folks can actually have it and access it and you can actually contact us.
Right, that way, things like this will happen.
Yeah, that way, nobody's being out of line and we can know exactly what the policies and procedures are because we just didn't know.
And that's, yeah.
This is common sense, it's yours.
I almost forgot one thing I wanted to recognize, Mr. Al Deacon's from the wonderful office that he represents. He may, he may have a few, uh, wants to say.
No, no, nothing, nothing. Just, um, glad to be here, um, available to the town if you ever need the senator for anything, I'm, that's why I'm here. Making my special appearance.
We thank you so much.
We, I will come to any special meeting you call, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you so much. I gotta move in a second.
I'm moving on to the second, it's about personnel matter, sanitation, division and administration, also some potential legal matters which police department.
Yes, sir. Going to executive session, it's about personnel matter, sanitation, division and administration, potential legal matter with the police department. Are you ready for a question?
Question.